Clark, Fish, Jorgensen. Cole, Steen, Mayor Buck.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Visitors and timed items, this is an opportunity for anyone who would like to address the council on anything that's either on the agenda or not on the agenda. We would ask that you come forward and give us your name and address and we'd like to hear what you have to say, so does somebody want to address the council at this time? Okay, we'll move on to public hearing. This is the first reading of ordinance 664 to rezone Lot 1 Block 7 Tallgrass Edition, 600 North Past Flower Trail from low density residential to general business. This is a public hearing therefore if somebody would like to speak, you know, to that issue, you're welcome to. Lee Skelling, 204 Elm Circle. You should have received the handout today. Patrick, did they get the handout as number one through 11 on it? Okay. Beginning with number one is what you approved previously for the twin home development. As I shared with the planning and zoning, we had a meeting with the contractor on July 13th and our infrastructure cost had more than doubled from what we originally had talked about and when we started our negotiations with the church, very similar to some of your city projects that obviously costs have gone up. So our hardship is that we had to pivot, we stopped the project and tried to figure out what else can we do to keep going forward? And we came across the comprehensive plan there that is the colorful map. I see Dana's got 100 desks right in front of her there, but it's just a colorful map where identifies in 2035 the city council and staff and the mayor approved that in December of 2014, basically looking for commercial potentially to go there. Then if you go into drawing number two, page two, that's our initial drawing that we received from DGR, kind of pointing out if we were to divide this up into three potential general business lots, how it would be positioned. This is what we met with some of the neighbors with and discussed, this was our original plan. I then went to the city and visited with Brian and Tammy and they supported us to go to general business if we could line up our driveways. So if you go to number three, what we did there is we lined the driveways up with Blakowskis across the road on Redwood and then the two on Past Flower. The reason, if you look compare two and three, there's a power pole. If you look at Lot 1 is larger on number two and it's smaller on number three, there's a power pole that we had to move over as well to line up with Blakowskis. And so then them three points, then going on to plan number three, that's what planning and zoning approved last week. We had some discussion from the neighbors in regards to the parking on Lot 1 on the east side of the building. So on drawing number four, DGR changed that parking over to the west side. That would have been the only change from three to four. And then five through 11, there was some discussion at the planning and zoning that this has never been done in Brandon or doesn't touch up against single family. So number five, there is Once Upon a Daycare there on the corner of Cedar and Sioux Boulevard. You can see the yellow is the single family homes and the pink would be the business. Number six is the groomers best or the old pace building, page six there. You notice the single family abuts up again there in yellow on Lewis Drive. On the I-90 Plaza, you noticed a single family there, there's approximately eight of them that butt up against the I-9 on page seven of your handout. Page eight of your handout is Northwest Tire that was recently approved. That's on Redwood there where the four single families abut up against it. Number nine is the Weir Camp dentist office where that abuts up to single family. Number 10, the Brandon One Center over by Blaine's and so on where the single family meet up against the businesses. And then finally, number 11 is the Fastenal, the Milky Way, Dollar General, and the Cairo Sport where it touches single family businesses. All in all, there's 41 houses there that touch businesses on that handout. In our particular project, there's five. Okay. Anybody else like to speak?
I'm Mike Totes, I live at 500 East Mayberry. We're just across past Flower, two houses down. This property would certainly affect our property. And I know some of these properties that Lee pointed out are built up single family by, I think, I know some of them, I know the ones behind like the B&amp;G, some of those are zoned R2, they're built up with single family, but they're zoned R2. The other thing is that this property that they're talking about, it's, it's not a blank slate right now, it's zoned R1. And the property owners that live there bought their houses with it being zoned R1. It's one thing to buy a house that backs up to a business that's zoned for business. It's another thing to buy a house that backs up to zone to R1 and have it changed to business. Those are two different things. One very unique thing about real estate is you can't move it. If the property changes to a business zoning, those homeowners have to move if they don't want to live next to a business. That's a big thing, okay? So it's something that at the planning and zoning, I, I feel like every time that they've addressed this property and the property directly west of it that's now being built up as single family, that was brought up for rezoning a couple of times and we discussed it and it stayed's single family. But when we talked to the planning and zoning, it was like it was a blank slate and this is not a blank slate. There are people with homes that live there with it and they bought their homes with it being zoned R1. It's not a blank slate. This affects people, it's a big thing. And I know that there are properties that back up to businesses, if that's your choice, you may have a lot of different choices. If that's your choice, that's fine, no problem with that. But we don't have a choice. Our house is there and we'd like to keep it there.
Jeff Smith, 517 Morning Rain Avenue. The land was bought as R1 development with twin homes to be on it. Now it is being said is no longer cost effective and they want to, quote from Thursday night's planning and zoning meeting, sell the dirt. They have no concern what goes on this parcel or the effects it would have on Tallgrass Village and the surrounding neighborhoods as long as they make their money. I know these gentlemen are businessmen and their intent and interest is financial gain. I do not fault them for this, but I feel that it should not be allowed to be changed due to their financial decision. As for those of us here and possibly others in the area, we do care what goes in this and the effects it will have on Tallgrass Village and the surrounding neighborhoods. We have had more than one meeting to keep this parcel R1, it was purchased with that intent as R1 and should be held to that. If city council were to allow it to go to general business, it would allow a vast varieties of establishments to occupy this property, gas stations, car washes, hospitals, liquor stores, casinos, and a long list of others. Several of these businesses could occupy the properties, could be a 24-hour business. This would bring noise concerns, lighting concerns, along with traffic concerns to the area. We have lived in Tallgrass for 20 years and years now and truly love and appreciate the way it was, was and would prefer to keep it that way as a family-friendly neighborhood. Thanks for your time.
Hi, my name is Riley Walls, I live at 609 North Tamarack Avenue. If you look at the map, it's directly to the east of the property, so I'm one of the neighbors that butts right up against it. So I moved to Brandon in 2020 and I was really excited to build new relationships with all the neighbors coming around here and kind of, you know, start anew here and Brandon graduated from SDSU and came down here. And recently, my neighbor actually just moved in last year as well. So it is kind of an up and coming area with a lot of young people coming in. Looking at this property, we were here, I mean, since I've moved in here, it's been two years and I've been to three city council meetings already just off of this property within the span of nine months. The first was in November, it was from an R1 to an R3 high-density residential, which would be, you know, apartment buildings. All the concerns that we had then are still standing for this switch to general business. So those concerns being solar access for neighbors, the change for this would be from 35 feet to 45 feet, increase in traffic as most people stated, uncertainty of what businesses will be there and how long, you know, whether they will be long-term or not, as many, some people have already stated. A lot of these businesses that were of discussion are along like major streets within Brandon and also a lot of them still have vacancies. So these lots, even if it does go to general business, might just stay vacant for a while. Light pollution, as you know, parking lots have security lighting of 24/7, so my backyard's right next to it, I see they addressed that in this image, but once again, they're just selling the lots. These aren't plans or proposals, it's just street access. And then lack of green space, it's always nice to, you know, have green space around you. Yeah, to me, it just doesn't really make sense of a general business here, it's kind of out of the way for a lot of these, you know, people coming through town, it's not a main road or anything like that. But one thing I'd like to know is I still haven't met the people who own this lot or trying to sell, I know last time they were saying that they met us. I would like to take this time to use this as like an open conversation or an invitation just to have them come talk to me sometime, because eventually these will get sold and I would, you know, like to have the conversation of, okay, who's buying it? So then they can move on, but thank you and I hope you consider this.
My name is Don DeJagger, I'm at 504 East Mayberry. I wanted to point out to the council just a few areas that homes are being built. Houses are going up on Sunflower, Augusta, Sunray, South Sioux Boulevard, Garnett, Burton, Legacy, but these developers can't seem to make it work there. There's homes going up on Riverbend Circle, Woodland, Kairos, Birchwood, Tracy, Chapelwood, Moonlight, Nicholas, Lakeview Street, and Forest Circle. The houses not, aren't going to work here. It's a big development going up on South Bennett Drive, there's houses going up, the Stone Ridge Development and there's townhomes going up on Sunburst. But we're supposed to accept the fact that this, this doesn't work at this location. I'm having a hard time believing that. The developer stated that he met with Brian Reed and Tammy Janzman, looking at different options for this land and suddenly were told to accept strip malls and plazas. I'm sorry, but I'm not buying what's being sold to us. The city council on many occasions had asked developers, speak to the residents each time, speak to the residents. No one spoke to us. A letter was presented from Blakowski Trucking. Why would they care? Even they know this is a bad idea. Some of these other businesses they talked about that I looked at, Mike Totes had mentioned that too, like the Fastenal Building and some of those other ones, they were never zoned R1. If you drive by there at night, the small parking lots in front of these businesses don't flood the, don't flood the homes around it with light. There's fencing, you know, they, they look aesthetically appealing. Lot three is going to directly light up my house with security lights. The developer stated, I want to move dirt, sell and be gone. You know what, I moved dirt too, I moved dirt 12 years ago. I want to stay another 12 years. The homeowners have met many times on this proposal, you know, what we wanted to go on there, we had a great agreement and it was a go and then all of a sudden we find ourselves here again. Mayor Hines stated in his denial previously, we owe it to these people to leave it R1. That's what it was when we bought it to them. Every house that's getting built in Brandon is sold, there's such a huge shortage of housing. That's why we're all for these twin homes, it looked nice, it was the right spot, it was the right fit. I don't understand why homes can't be built there. I don't expect the paid positions of zoning and planning to care about homeowners' feelings, but I do ask you, our elected officials, to do so. My wife and I enjoy sitting outside and we enjoy the neighborhood at night. You're asking me to accept parking lots that will be lit up flooding our house 24, I mean, all through the night, how's that going to be enjoyable? If they can't make it work, I apologize, I had thought I muted it, guys. If they can't make it work for homes, then sell it to someone who can, because it doesn't seem like any other developers in town are having any problem putting homes up. I ask you to, once again, deny this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Shawna Shipper, 601 Tamarack. This is multiple times being up here. You know, I, as well as the other constituents here, have no shortage of reasons why this should not pass. One of them is, there's, there's no protection for what could be there. Like it's been previously stated, there can be, you know, car wash, a mortuary, gas stations, you know, all sorts of, you know, there can be a bar, there can be daycares, some of which don't need a conditional use, they can just build. All of the chiropractors, hairdressers, dentists, anything that might maybe be a positive thing, they're all along Split Rock and Holly Boulevard. Another reason, you know, the zoning panel last week said that they were lacking commercial properties and they're going to need this space. However, I was doing some, some pretty basic research and I found on one website that there's over 30 commercial spaces ready to lease and eight available to purchase in varying different stages. And that doesn't necessarily include the I-90 project, the future 90 acres on Asman Boulevard, the 40 acres in the Rovang and Business Area, and then almost a dozen different properties along Holly Boulevard. Literally hundreds of acres zoned for business already in various stages of development. I'm again going to bring up my concerns about flooding. Over the last few decades, over, you know, poor planning and development led to overflowing waterways when it rained and the taxpayers paid almost $350,000 on Redwood and it still floods. According to Brandon's own Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, Section A states that the state of South Dakota has delegated responsibility for local government units to adapt regulations designed to minimize flood losses. Section B states that essentially states that the city of Brandon accepts this liability. Here's an abbreviated, more relevant finding. The city must control development which may increase flood damage. Also, the same complaint as some others, I think lighting of the parking lot could be an issue. Homeowners are going to have to modify their lifestyles and homes to accommodate. I think general garbage and litter from the parking lot will be annoying and homeowners will be burdened with that. I think that hours of operation could be an issue. There's no ordinance saying that when businesses can be open, when deliveries can be made. There's no way for homeowners to stop the noise. We're a somewhat vulnerable neighborhood in the fact that we have manufacturing across the street to the north. We have income housing to the east and the former water treatment plant and railroad tracks to the west. Various realtors have said indeed that this could be a less favorable resale value due to the fact that any business could be back there. Also, I read the consent letter from Blakowski and he stated, "The contingency of support for the effort was specifically for office or retail only. It does not include consent for anything else that would go there."
Anyone else?
My name is Tim Mullin and I live at 505 Carroll Avenue. We moved here about a year and a half ago, coming up on the two-year mark. We did it for the future education of my daughters, who are both in the Brandon High School. And moving from Garrettson, being the mayor in Garrettson for eight years and then moving to this community, the what-if would really scare me a lot. I know what it's like to sit in your, that chair. And when someone comes to me and says, "What if we changed to this?", that's a huge concern. The traffic on Pascal, I think it's going to be too much because the streets are shorter together, east-west, that's a lot of traffic. My kids are going to have to deal with that traffic and they don't have to now, all because of what-if. I, I agree with my neighbors, the townhouses that they had to plan for were fine. I just think they need to come up with a plan, need to make the plan work for the R1, because you always, communities always need places for houses, twin homes. I just think there's got to be a better plan and I hope you folks will listen to all the concerns from the neighbors. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address this issue?
Good evening, my name is Linda Chris, I live at 516 Morning Rain, along with my husband Gary. I'm no big speaker, so it's taken a big deal for me to stand up here and speak to you guys, but I'm fed up with what's been going on in our neighborhood. My husband and I built our home in 2002, so we're the golden oldies of the neighborhood. We moved to Brandon from Sioux Falls based on, on an ideal, an ideal of a perfect neighborhood that brought my husband and I back to the days that we had when we grew up. We're neighbors, new neighbors, where you walk down the street and you visited with people as you walked your dogs. And you found a camaraderie within the group. Our little small neighborhood of Tallgrass Village has that feel. We're narrow streets, wide sidewalks, porches, open porches on the fronts of our houses, garages in the back. You find people out and about within the neighborhood all the time, greeting each other, voicing concerns about each other. I had a health issue a couple of years back and right away, the neighborhood is, if you ever need anything, you call us immediately. It's, it's a neighborly feel, people care about each other. And that's so important during this time of social tension that we find throughout our country. To take away the safety of our neighborhood is a concern for me. I'm not sure what's going to go into that space. And my, one of my biggest concerns is safety. What are we going to face with business places being there? We have small children within the neighborhood. Again, the light issue is an issue. I don't border that property, but I'm here to say that I stand behind my neighbors, I do, because again, we are a community, we are a neighborhood, we support each other and what happens to them, what affects them affects me. Another concern is the marketability of our property. If we decide we don't want to live by the business, again, you're going to tell us our tax rate's not going to decrease because our property is still as valuable as it ever has been, but the marketability changes. Who's going to want to live next door to 24-hour lights? The traffic issues that people have discussed and again, the question of safety. So again, my husband and I voice our objection to the rezoning of the property as stated. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak to the issue?
TJ Barthman, 1016 South Nicholas Avenue. I own this property with Lee, we're business partners on this property. And I appreciate everything that was said and when we look at the project, we did start with twin homes, that was the original concept that we put together. We felt that was a good fit as well. We actually spent $20,000 with an engineering firm to be told it wouldn't work. So we did go down that path, we went down that path wholeheartedly, we tried. And some of the comments that were brought up about where there's houses being developed elsewhere, agree wholeheartedly. However, that infrastructure was already in place. Our infrastructure, to actually prove his point would be, when we first looked at doing this, our infrastructure bid worked. And as in those developments, their infrastructure bid would work, that you could recoup the cost through lot sales and so forth. From when we started the project to when we decided to move forward and sign the contract after we got through negotiation, we got through planning and zoning, we got through all of our engineering, it doubled, okay? So to go back to that point is, had we put in the infrastructure 18 months ago, it would have worked. But where the infrastructure costs are at today, it doesn't work. There's, there's only 20 lots there. So when you look at cost averaging back to get our money, over 20 lots, it doesn't work. We got to add $15,000, $20,000 per lot to try and make that up. So when you compare it to a Vembuskirk Development in the Bluffs or North Sioux, we don't have even close to that many lots to catch back up the infrastructure cost. When you look at some of the other developments that were brought up that infrastructure was already in 18 months ago, 24 months ago, when costs weren't where they are today. I understand having, having a house next to a vacant lot, I myself do as well. As a realtor, I always tell anybody, anytime you're buying a house next to a vacant lot, there's a risk. I cannot guarantee you what will or will not be there as a realtor, if you were buying that house next to that lot, there's a risk that comes with buying next to a vacant lot. Lots get rezoned, there's There's actually a process. That's what we're going through right now, so it's not some far-fetched idea that a vacant lot could get rezoned. The properties that we showed, there was 41 total in what Lee had given you guys of single-family. Now again, there's many more if I was to put in there, townhouses, apartments, multifamily, but if we just use single-family in that situation. And you do, I agree, you do. You make a choice when you buy a house next to a vacant lot. And the city has codes and ordinances, and everything has to be followed in order to rezone it to general business. And if it does get zoned to general business, they too have codes and things they have to follow, as far as what can and cannot go in there, who what has to get, different type of ordinances and so forth. One of the ones that had come up too, when you look at this lot, this lot is on Redwood, which again, I'm agreeing with most of what was said as far as Holly and Split Rock do carry most of our general business and retail. I agree with that. But to my point is, this is more what we would call a Level B versus a Level A. And what I'm saying there is that you're not going to have a prime, busy retail corner on Redwood. The traffic doesn't support it. This is going to be more of, a grade B is more of your dental, your office, your chiropractor, your appointment-placed people. That's what those businesses will be there, unless you're going to try and put a huge retail place that needs a ton of traffic on a street that doesn't have a ton of traffic. That just doesn't make sense. So it's going to be more of your hairstylist, your appointment-type places. I do also agree with the gentleman that said, "Hey, I don't want this to be confrontational either. I want it to be an open conversation. We're not here to make any enemies." But it doesn't work financially. What we set out for with the new infrastructure costs, I only have 20 lots to recoup the money. It doesn't work. It financially doesn't pencil. So we had to pivot. These buildings that we want to go in here are owner-occupied. So again, trying to address some of the questions, that's the difference. The difference is, one of the people that came up had pointed out some areas that are available for rent right now. Correct, I agree 100%. That's not what these necessarily, these will be more owner-occupied. So if you own an insurance company, and you want to build a 6,000-square-foot building, and you want to take 2,000 of it, and then you want to rent a couple bays out, you can. But this is more driven for the owner-occupied person, not necessarily just looking to get a lease. Another question was brought up on the drainage. If you look at your drawings that Lee had given you, number three, that's the last one we have there. On the south side, you'll see there is a BMP, Best Management Practice, as well as the drainage. And so the drainage through the DGR engineering firm has been addressed. As far as fencing, that was another question that came up. That would be a Paul thing when that comes up. Yes, there does have to be a fence. It's a city ordinance that when you have commercial next to general business, there has to be a fence there. Lighting was an issue that had been brought up. Currently, there's parking lot lights there already in a church. Yes, we would be adding to that, but most parking lot lights, they're not like streetlights. They don't necessarily protrude out. They come down. So I don't see how that's, I don't see it necessarily going into, you know, 300 feet away into people's windows. Parking lot lights typically go down. Marketability, I guess I'd maybe have a little bit of disagreement on that one. As a realtor, again, it's a heck of a lot easier to sell a house when I know what's there versus when I don't know what's there. And that was actually, I think her point was, we don't know what's going to go there, so we lose value. I would probably agree. I would say that it's harder to sell a house when I'm trying to sell you a house, and you say to me, "What's going to be in that lot?" And I say, "I don't know. I don't know. I can't guarantee it. I can't guarantee it's going to stay R1. I can't tell you what's going to be there." All those houses up on Liberty that now have I-90 Plaza behind them, same thing. That was an alfalfa field, you know, not too long ago. And so there's a risk whether you buy or build next to the railroad that used to not be used and now it's going to be used or potentially used. There's a risk in that. And so I think the marketability actually is a null and void, or maybe even better once we know what is there, when I'm trying to sell a house. Questions for me from the council?
We have the costs today that came in, they came in too high. All of this is driven by COVID. What are the possibilities of that changing and making it a more feasible plan for R1 a year from now?
I would say slim. Due to the fact there was a whole bunch of money that was just given out for infrastructure from federal government to city municipalities, municipalities are going to be using that money for infrastructure costs. And so the demand for pipe fittings, the demand for water connections, the demand for, that's not going down anytime soon. So if the demand don't go down, the price ain't going to go down. And so all this federal money that was given out to municipalities is going to be spent over the next three to five years. And as that demand stays high, the prices are going to stay high.
Also, is there any way of guaranteeing what kind of businesses could go in there? So that, I mean, there's concerns about casinos, gas stations. I don't see a gas station moving in there, quite frankly, but car washes, things of that nature. Is there any way of guaranteeing that that's, that we are, we would be looking at dentist offices or something of that nature, something a little less impact?
I will not, I will not continue to own it, so I can't guarantee it. Our goal is to have a professional plaza. Again, I think the reason it fits there is it is off the beaten path. It's more of a Level B-type setting. Agree, it's not going to have a gas station. You know, that's on, you know, Holly going up. They need a lot of traffic, and this doesn't warrant that. So when you look at those businesses that potentially could be of concern, if there's not the high traffic, it's a pretty bad business decision to put that business there if you need high visibility and traffic. So it's more of a professional plaza. That's who we would go out and try and talk to. That's who we'd go out. We do, just by being realtors, by being in Brandon, we get asked all the time whether that's chiropractors looking to build a spot, whether that's insurance people looking to build a spot. I don't want to throw anybody, we just had a New York Life agent coming in the office today looking for a spot. So we have a lot of that where they, and those are the first people we're going to go out and try and call and talk to if we get it approved.
So TJ, a compromise might be where we would have a zone that we don't have now, but a zone that would limit what sorts of businesses could be there? Because one of the concerns of mine as the audience is, it's pretty wide open. A lot of things don't need conditional use. You can put them in there. So if we had something that was a little bit more like an office complex kind of thing, would that work in your situation, knowing that we don't have it at this time?
Well, a couple things. How long would that take, right? We got carrying costs. We're sitting on this. How long does that take? Number two is, you know, one of the other things we had talked about with planning and zoning was retail. And so if you're only going to make it office, then you lose the retail option. When, so I think that was brought up actually by one of, someone in the audience, that at planning and zoning, that is exactly what we said was retail and office. So those would be who we would be, you know, yep, talking to.
Could I ask Patrick a question about this? So I had watched the video from the planning and...
Does he want this one?
No. Okay. There you go.
Yep.
Okay. So I'd watched the meeting from planning and zoning, and first I'll just say, when this topic came back up, my heart just kind of sank for the residents because I know that this has been a lot to deal with over the years for this property and the one to the west. But then I did take pause, and I thought, well, maybe it wouldn't be horrific to live next to a CPA or a New York Life agent or what have you. I think my biggest hang-up and probably some of the residents is, there is absolutely no guarantee. And in that planning and zoning meeting, Patrick had made a comment to some extent saying, I won't quote, but what needs to be considered by P&amp;Z and councils, if they feel the list of permitted uses in general business ultimately fit the property. And to me, I feel like we need to look at worst-case scenario. So what could go in there? Because what could go in there can go in there if we pass this. And we need to be able to look these people in the audience in the eye and say, "We knew that that was a chance, and it, you know, it happened." You know, that 24-hour car wash happened, and we knew it was a chance that it would happen. Because that's ultimately what we're saying if we go out to general business. During the P&amp;Z meeting, there was a very brief mention about that neighborhood commercial zone, which I like leaned forward. I'm like, "Tell me about this," while I was watching the meeting, and it really didn't get discussed very much. But as I understand it, it could kind of do exactly what we're talking about. We have no control over general business. If it says it's a permitted use, it's clear sailing, and there's another list that's possible clear sailing with a conditional use. But if I understand correctly, we could, in probably a matter of a couple P&amp;Z meetings, whip out a community, or is it neighborhood? Neighborhood commercial? So Patrick, can you tell us a little bit, can you tell us a little bit about what that is? Are there any other communities that in the area do that? What would that look like? How long would it take?
So several communities do have a smaller, it's a general business district, but more focused on retail adjacent rather than kind of as a, where, along major arterials or collector streets. So I, in my past career with CCOG, we worked with the city of T. I believe North Sioux City has a neighborhood commercial, or at least they have, they have a couple of commercials. So there are a few communities with that. It would be, planning and zoning would sit down, and we would think about what works best for a commercial property in a residential neighborhood. We would sit and talk through the uses, and we'd probably want to be very specific rather than a general retail heading. We would want to look at what would work for that area and kind of come up with a list. It would probably take a couple of meetings to think, and those are twice a month, planning and zoning meets. Then they would, kind of like the process everyone went to, they would have a public hearing. Then it would come to city council as a public hearing and a second reading. And the big kicker on adopting anything is the 20-day referendum period, so that slows down the process. So that probably at a minimum, you're looking at three months if things really click, click, click along. But potentially depending on community input and how planning and zoning wants to go through things, it could take a little bit longer than that.
And what kind of things could be hammered out in that? I mean, can you cap the, because right now, under general business, I believe we can go up to like a four-story building. Could that be addressed in our own separate?
Yep. You can set heights, you can set lot sizes. I would have to look at if you could blanket set hours of operation. I'm not sure if you didn't make them a conditional use, if you could potentially.
Because I do feel like if there's a way to compromise, I get both sides, but I don't feel that that huge burden should go on the neighbors to go from R1 to worst-case scenario, four-story building, 24-hour car wash. I don't feel that that's fair. But I do feel like there is room for some discussion in the middle, and it doesn't sound like it's an insanely long process. So I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion to deny this request and send it back to P&amp;Z to work on the community commercial zone.
I don't know if anybody else wanted to speak, so we need to finish the public hearing first, if there are any comments, and maybe there aren't any others, but I just want to make sure that everybody's had that opportunity.
Do you have anything else?
So process-wise, this is treated as a first reading. Your second reading is where you would vote. Can you vote?
Is there anyone else that would like to address the issue?
Let me ask a question of some of those people that spoke to this. Would a neighborhood commercial designation give you more comfort on something like this? Or is this something that is a no-go for you? I mean, I'm looking at the church across the street and...
I guess I don't really want to speak for the group, but I would like more information about that before we kind of, and maybe as a community, maybe we could talk a little bit about too, if something was presented to us, even just an outline of what it might look at, look like, so we can, you sit down and have a discussion about that before we answer that, if that's fair?
Tim, would the public be allowed to participate in P&amp;Z discussions on this? Because you guys are a little less formal, and they can kind of chime in in the middle of a conversation, right?
Yes. So when we write any ordinance, I mean, our meetings are open to the public every time we have one. Most people don't stick around for the discussion items, oddly enough, but that's where most of that happens. And yeah, absolutely. I mean, when we create a new zone, whether we create a new zone or write new ordinance, those things usually take lots of discussion before they happen. You know, something like this, like, okay, so I got a lot. So first of all, I don't think, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but we can't zone businesses out of our town. Right? So you can't, you can't limit what a business can come to town. You can limit where it goes, but you can't just say, "We don't allow this to be here." Right? So that's why general business exists and why it has so many options. Some of those options come with a conditional use because we've recognized that maybe those are more sensitive businesses, so we'll have a conditional use to make sure it fits in that place. We don't have a tool like a neighborhood commercial to use for zoning. I mean, you can do things like, you can limit the size, you can limit whether it has a drive-through or not, you can limit, like, there's lots of ways of limiting what can go there, as long as they have another place in town that they can go. So I mean, you can certainly, when you're designing it, you can make it look and feel in a certain way. So that just takes time for the P&amp;Z to actually sit down and do that work. There's lots of things to consider on that. I mean, I would, I struggle with this because I don't necessarily like to go against the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I do feel as though, if provided another tool to use, they would have had that tool to use. They didn't have it. Neither did developers have it, neither did our city staff have it. It's a tool that we never, I guess we just never did. We certainly could. What else was I going to bring up? There's lots of stuff. As far as like land valuation and maybe even a little history of this property. So the Celebration Methodist bought all this. It's zoned R1 because R1 is, you can build churches in R1. And this lot was always supposed to be the sanctuary for Celebration Methodist. Now, that didn't work out. It was never bought as a developable R1 lot. Like, it was never big enough to do that kind of development on. It was always supposed to be a sanctuary. It's not. They sold it. They have every right to sell it. But more than likely, it will never be R1. It's just not big enough to do it. Right? We had this where Scooters and the pharmacy and Chiro Sport and all that is located used to be zoned R1. About, I don't know how many years ago it was, we rezoned it to general business. We heard at the time that property values were going to go down, that all the kids were going to be in jeopardy, all of those things. Now, I will say, all these years later, none of that's happened. So we do have a little history of rezoning properties, and it absolutely working out. But I do, I think moving forward, I would like to put another tool in the hands of our city staff. So I probably would be in favor of that.
Go ahead.
I guess I just had a couple things. One, I guess to the developers, one, would this timeframe be, you know, something that, is this a deal-breaker for you guys, or is this something that might be doable?
Tough question, but I'd probably not say doable. We're watching how long this takes already. If every one of those P&amp;Z meetings is going to have public input, how long does that take? How long does it take to agree? Where do we start and stop? Where do we start and stop on who do we let in, who do we not let in? And if we can't agree on that, then that goes to the next meeting. How long does this take on creating? I don't think creating this tool is a two-meeting project, nor should, nor do I think it should be. I think if you want to use this as a tool moving forward for planning and zoning, awesome. I would assume it needs to... I would assume it needs to go through some type of legal review. I would assume it needs to go through city administration. I'm assuming it needs to go through multiple planning and zoning meetings. This isn't something that's probably going to get done in a couple meetings. So although I, I'm not disagreeing with the option of having that tool, I think it would be best to be put in afterwards.
My other just thought, no, you know, it's okay, TJ, you're, you're good. My other just, again, taking off my city council hat and putting on my, my trade is I'm a real estate appraiser, kind of off of what Tim said too, you know, I've done this multiple times where I've appraised homes that back up to, to commercial. And again, it's just a huge loaded question as far as if it's going to affect, affect overall val, value of a home. With it being said, if we did pass this and it was just straight general business, and again, the unknown is the unknown, so, you know, if I, if I looked at, if I looked at this as a, as a appraising a prop, a residential home that was going to back up to something that is general commercial, it's, you know, it, the unknown is, is, is very tough for me to put any kind of quantitative val, value on that, make any kind of deduction, because I, I don't know. If we did, again, have, have a tool in place that we knew, and I, as an appraiser, knew that, hey, there is a neighborhood commercial in there, you know, that, it would, again, would give us all, all more tools, and I think it would help the homeowners know, like, hey, at least this is all that could go back, can, can go in there. Whereas, again, with general business, yeah, we're kind of holding it wide open right now. So, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else like to address the council on this issue? I appreciate everybody coming in. I'm a little bit surprised that there's so many people that are concerned about it. I actually personally talked to one adjacent homeowner and, and one business across the street, Bukowski, and both of them thought that this was a better idea than having a single-family with the twin homes. So I'm a little surprised that there's so many people that don't think it's a better idea. Anyway, that being said, we've got the first reading. If there's nobody else to speak, the first reading of...
And you have a motion.
Send it back to P&amp;Z to work on this neighborhood.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to deny the ordinance, the first reading of ordinance 664, to send it back to planning and zoning and hopefully come up with a, with a compromise plan.
Yeah, I really hate to go against P&amp;Z. I've made a policy to try to support them whenever possible, but as Tim noted, when they were presented with this, we didn't have another option. And I think this is a nice compromise. I, I think, folks, that we need to realize that it's probably going to get changed at some point. I mean, I just, I, I don't know. But I, I, if it's too small to build on, that's going to be a problem. So this would be a compromise. I could live with that, even though I hate going against P&amp;Z.
And Patrick, you said that this is not something that's new in, in the world of development, that we're not creating something that hasn't been created before, so we can possibly build off of what other people already have in place?
Correct. At the next P&amp;Z meeting, even though I will be up in Bismarck, I will have a draft for P&amp;Z to, to take a look at, to have a starting place. So everyone is welcome to attend in that next meeting. It's 15.
For the sake of the developers, I'm hoping that this is something that's front burner and can address quickly.
Any other discussion?
One last, one last thing, I guess, for, for my standpoint. That's what I would just encourage more than anything. This is just an awesome, open conversation. I would hope that everybody would, I know it's time-consuming, but man, I just would hope you guys would all come to the next P&amp;Z meeting if this does go through, so, you know, this can be talked about more. Lee and TJ, they're, they live in this community. They want, they don't, they don't want to burn bridges. We know that. You guys live in the community. We all want to, you know, we all want something great in that spot. So man, if we can just all come together and hopefully find a happy medium so that everybody walks away like, okay, here we go.
I guess I'd back what Colin just said there. Obviously, we sleep, eat, drink, worship, whatever, kids go to school here. We want everybody to get along. I'm, I guess I would like, think if there's such a thing for the record, a half a vote instead of a denial. In other words, I'll work with Patrick and TJ, and I'll sit down and try to change that as well. We just did a project in Sioux Falls where it's somewhat called Office. I was trying to think of, in my notes, what it was called, on Southeastern Drive there. It, it's between Great Life and the single-family houses that are there. We'll come up with something, but I, I guess I don't want a denial. I just kind of want a, we'll work with you, try to come up with it, good for everybody, and go forward, and we'll change Brandon for the better. So.
As a formality, is that even an option, Lisa, or?
No.
I guess what I'm saying is I don't want it to be a 100% denial. That's where it's going, because I, then I, I got that, like, what do you mean, I got denied. I want it to be open, open for, how are, how is your...
It was, it was deferred to the Planning and Zoning Commission to develop a neighborhood commercial zoning business.
To, to deny this request from R1 to general business and say, "We go back to the drawing board with it and try to, to work on it." And, and I don't think, just to kind of clarify my reasoning behind it, it's certainly nothing personal, but I watched the meeting and I realized your intent is to sell to somebody else, and I think that's probably more of where my thought process is with the safeguarding, because you don't know what's going to happen after it leaves your hands. And, you know, these folks are my neighbors, and I, I just, I don't want them to end up with something that just hits that slotted list. So that's where I'm coming from. It's certainly not personal. But as, yeah, as a formality, since we have it proposed, I think we have to either accept or decline, but we've got the experts over at that table.
So in the notes, we wanted to say that we're trying to look for a different zoning that doesn't exist today.
Looking for a zoning that doesn't exist today, that's somewhere more office, retail, not so broad as general business. Would that be a true statement? And we'll work with you. We'll work with you.
That's, that's what we understand the motion to be, is that it goes back to P&amp;Z. They go through their process to amend or create a new zoning district for neighborhood commercial, which includes X, Y, and Z as permitted uses.
Thank you.
If they adopt it, you're still going to have to go through a rezoning, so that, that has to happen then as well. Right. And then we're...
The comfort level will be...
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to deny and go back to planning and zoning on ordinance 664. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. We'll move on to, we have an appointment to be made in Ward 3 for a council member, and so I would listen to any discussion or motions on this issue.
Say again.
Stay with me.
I'm trying, you move quickly. I think we've got some really good candidates, and I appreciate people stepping forward and, and looking for these, you know, volunteering to come into this kind of position. And going over everything, and I, I guess I would make a motion for Bruce Johnson.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, to point Bruce Johnson to fill the vacancy in Ward 3. Any further discussion?
Just want to take a second, echo what Dave said. It's very much appreciated that we have applicants, and I think any of the three would be great.
Yeah, I would echo that. I sat out there just recently, and, and so, I mean, I appreciate, I feel like we need more people to step up in this community, and no matter what happens here now, man, it's just, it's fun to see this room packed and people get involved, because we're all in this together. So I feel like we had some great, great candidates, and I hope, no matter which direction this goes, that individuals will want to continue to stay involved in the future, so.
I agree with everything that's been said. I appreciate everybody that stepped up, and I would encourage you to continue to stay active and, or become active in the community. Any other discussion?
Just thought it'd be effective tomorrow. We don't expect them to jump up there right now, and then they would do the oath of office next meeting, and we'll get in touch with them between now and then and do some training with them. Staff will...
Whoever, whoever's selected will, will be seated at the next meeting.
And Thomas, I know you had applied for this a couple of times, but, but from a selfish standpoint, I'd like to see you stay on P&amp;Z. So that's where I'm coming from, because you do a nice job.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, Bruce, I guess.
Yeah.
Old business.
He didn't run away. He didn't run out.
Second reading of ordinance 662, defining and allowing location for group homes.
Motion.
Motion, a second, to approve the second reading of ordinance 662. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to, go ahead.
You got a gap, yeah. Finally.
Number nine, standing committee report, starting with the golf course.
No seasonal hire, unfortunately.
Anything else from the golf course? We have a groundbreaking.
The ninth.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
The 13th.
13th, excuse me.
Four o'clock.
Anybody that'd be able to go to that? I'm going to be out of town, but good luck.
Is it at four?
Yes.
Moving on to Parks and Rec. You've seen the, the park report on pages 45 and 46. We've got a special event application for the soccer group.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion is...
Good, I just, I didn't know if you could...
Oh, excuse me.
I can't read your shirt. I can't read your shirt. Yeah.
What is soccer?
What is soccer? Well, some people can kick the ball way better than I do. But I'm the treasurer for Brandon Soccer, so I can...
Push that a little button there.
I'm the treasurer for Brandon Soccer, Heather Hoseaffles. If you have any questions, just let me know. But we've done these events for a couple of years, and we're very proud of being able to do that in the city here, and appreciate you being able to let us do that.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you for sitting.
Thank you. Special event application for a soccer tournament, I think it is.
Yep, T-Tempo Tournament.
Yes, that's yours too. That is mine too. Yes, yeah, we're two smaller soccer...
Dang it, okay, we're two sm... I'm used to it, though, so. We're two smaller soccer clubs, and T doesn't really support their, their soccer group, so we've been coming together for the last couple of seasons and doing this together, and it's brought a lot of business to the community and everything, and it's gone really well, and I don't think there's been any problems with Parks and Rec.
We're happy to take T's overflow of business. Had a motion?
In a second.
In a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Special event application for Fall Scout Camp Re.
Yep, this event was approved for the spring, but weather conflicted or caused some issues, so it's been moved to September 9 through the 11th.
I'll make a motion here.
Motion?
I'll second it.
Motion in a second.
I was just going to say, I'm Paula Eric. I am a scout volunteer from Troop 99 in T, and I have brought along our scouting professional from the Sioux Council, Brett Eljets, who has some history with growing up near Brandon. So we just wanted to say we're very grateful. Thank you for letting us do this. Right now, we have over 100 people signed up to come, and we know that we will be getting more at the door. We're being very mindful of parking. We're being very mindful of the neighbors. We have a large agenda. We're going to keep those kids busy, focus on good character building, we're focusing on personal fitness and team building, and also a little inclusion exercises to get all the kids working and making new friends. So we just want to say we're very grateful, and thank you very much for partnering with us on this event.
Thank you for coming. You look very official.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
In a second.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Celebration United Methodist Church at McCarty Park.
They would like to host the carnival that they had this spring on May 26 through the 28th of 2023.
Okay. Motion, a second, to approve. Any further discussion?
Kudos for so being thorough.
Exactly. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Seasonal employee.
Parks Department is recommending we hire Heather Phillips at $16 an hour, since we've lost all of our summer seasonal help.
I would make a motion here.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the new employee. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Public safety. Inspection report. Any comments? Block party application for the 100 block of South Oak Ridge Road.
This is, this is for an auction, and all affected property owners have signed the application.
Right.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the block party application. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Revised police officer job description.
Yeah, as I mentioned on, at the briefing meeting, whenever we are looking to post a position or promote a position, we always review job descriptions and make sure they're updated with any new standards or regulations from the state, and then we also just look for them, review them as far as industry standards and some of our neighbors as well. So that's just the updated version for your review and approval.
Motion, a second.
Motion, a second, to approve, to approve the revised police officer job description. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Administration Communication Report on page 69. Any issues there, staff? First reading, first reading of ordinance 663, the budget. Something we've been working on for a couple of months?
Yep, we've been working on it a few months. We've had our budget work session, so this ordinance would reflect those. The expenditures for 2023, including all funds and capital projects, is $48.7 million, about an 8.29 increase over last year. So it'll be another busy year.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the budget for 2023. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. We have got a wild game feed raffle. I guess we don't need to vote on that.
No, the, the next three items, the wild game feed raffle, the, the post 4726 raffle, the auxiliary raffle, you don't need to take action on those unless you want to deny them.
Okay, we'll move on to South Dakota opioid settlement. Wow. That was a big deal.
Real quick synopsis or summary, as you are aware, several states sued the manufacturer of opioids a couple of years ago. That judgment was awarded. South Dakota gets a share. We, as a city, over 10,000 get a share of that as well. Our share would be $64,800 spread out over the next 18 years, so it's about $3,600 a year. year. They have several pages of approved expenditures or programs that can be funded with that money. At this point in time, you know, we haven't done a deep dive into those approved expenditures or programs, but I would recommend that we accept the award and then work out something, maybe with a, another jurisdiction in the future, for instance, the county. They get significantly more money than we do, and then maybe we can throw our share to the county instead of having it go elsewhere throughout the state.
Motion and second to approve the settlement. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Or maybe the county would like to throw theirs to us.
That, that, that just means more work. Outside of our expertise.
Yes, there you go. Streets. So the work report on page 101 and 102. Any questions?
No, we've got the Tree Branch drop-off site scheduled for Saturday, October 22nd, from 9 to 3 at the old Waste Water Ponds location, just as we did previously.
Okay.
Painting?
The one they were taking, the, or the cell phone towers. Oh, no, the new water tower, no. It's not going to take place this year. It'll be next spring. You have to specify which tower now. We have more than one.
Water and Sewer.
We've got the water meter replacement bid set up. Advertised bids starting tomorrow. We will open a war, or open bids on the 21st. Hopefully, we're looking at next April 30th for the project completion.
Okay. There's no new business, so we have an opportunity to go into executive session.
I, I did want to compliment you on this coming out in the, in the water bill. I thought this was nicely done, a good explanation of what's going on, and, so thank you for doing that.
Good job.
And we do have executive session.
So we'll need to adjourn.
We need to have a motion to go into executive session for personnel and contract negotiations.
Motion and second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye. Pose, same sign. Motion carries.